Welcome everyone to this Monday, July 12th, 2021, a meeting of the Livermore City Council. It's virtual. We're just returning from a closed session. How to, we're doing it under the COVID Zoom rules. So I think everybody knows how to do that. But how to participate is given in the, at the end of the agenda. And the city clerk will let people know how to participate as we get to each item. So the, at this point, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember Kick.
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. And next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Now you can follow on with me on mute, but I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, we're now, we have a report of any action taken in a closed session from the city attorney, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, there was no reportable action taken in closed session. However, I will mention that we did not conclude our conversation and that we will be reconvening in closed session at the conclusion of the regular meeting and before the meeting actually adjourns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're on to, we don't have any proclamations and presentations this evening. So next up is Citizens Forum. And we usually, let's just say we get allowed 30 minutes and then if not concluded in that period of time, then we'll pick it up again at the end of the, towards the end of the meeting. And it's, I'll just say, we'll go until 7:35 if we have to, and then break at that point. The, at this, could the city clerk explain the process, please? For how, for how citizens can participate?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine of calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item is introduced. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and I want to remind everyone that the public comment period now is for items not on the agenda. And if you have something on the agenda, then you will wait, we'll have, ask you to defer to that particular item. And that the council can't deliberate or discuss items not on the agenda. So with that, could open the public citizens forum and can we start, please?
Yes, Mayor, there are five participants with their hand raised. The first speakers are Alan Marling, followed by Jackie Coda and a participant with the phone number. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm a Livermore resident. On June 10th, the Independent published an editorial titled "Setting the Record Straight" that attempted to cast its owner in the best possible light. I can just imagine Joan Sepulveda on her Hilltop mansion dictating to her newspaper to portray her as a working class hero. The editorial was in response to a May 25th article in the San Francisco Chronicle and a community outcry against Joan Sepulveda at a Livermore council meeting, where despite her best efforts to stop it, affordable housing passed in an unanimous vote. Joan Sepulveda uses her money and her local newspaper to try to control the city of Livermore. She distributes the Independent to residents whether they ask for it or not. Not only has she opposed affordable housing and local solar energy, she also wants to have her cake and eat it too by portraying herself as in favor of those necessities. Really? Her paper labels saying she opposes as controversial then creates that controversy. She printed full page ads misrepresenting the appearance of Eden Housing and diverted attention from this and other actual solutions. Rather than campaigning against affordable housing directly, she tries to undermine projects that could be built by comparing them to seemingly better ones that never will be. She prints, quote, "alternative plans," end quote, "that are so impractical, they are unlikely to be constructed in her lifetime." Her energy plan called for solar panels on tops of roofs and parking lots, that's twice as expensive and half as realistic as those in their Aramis project, which she fought against and is now delayed with lawsuits she helped fund. Blocking the Aramis project forces us to continue to rely on dirty energy generated in Hayward, polluting a region with more working class and people of color. The lawsuit against Aramis Project also keeps local union workers from much needed employment. She has also promised to litigate against Eden Housing. In the June 10th puff piece on her paper, which her paper wrote for her, she again makes a claim that she and the political group she funds are in favor of affordable housing. On the very next page, a huge ad by the same group retaliates against the city council that approved the affordable housing and makes another dubious claim about the building site. Joan Sepulveda also bankrolls the group Friends of Livermore, which argued against solar on Earth Day. Specifically during a 2021 Alameda Supervisors meeting, Friends of Livermore said, "The public need for solar is overstated or doesn't exist on Earth Day." Her recent campaigns have fought against both the urgent needs of Californians and truth itself. If Joan Supla, Joan Sepulveda truly cares for her community, she must care for affordable housing and local solar energy. And if she truly cares for those, she must oppose filing a legal suit against Eden Housing and urge for the withdrawal of the suit against Aramis Solar. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Coda, followed by phone number and John Marshon. Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
In the last council meeting, please restart it. You just unmuted me again. Thank you. In the last council meeting, Councilmember Kick suggested that the General Plan Advisory Board look specifically at race as a hiring practice. She said, quote, "If we all picked 50-year-old white men, we might not be representative," unquote. Does Councilmember Kick not know that hiring based on race was outlawed several decades ago? Does she also not know that voters approved the affirmative action ban in California 24 years ago, along with the ban on using race and gender in hiring decisions in state government and contracting? So why isn't counsel that was so appalled by the planning commissioner's comments a few weeks ago, not formally censuring the consistent bigoted comments coming directly from Councilmember Kick? I respectfully request that she be equitably censured, just like you did, Mr. Stein. This is the second time we've heard her destructive comments like this during council meetings. This seems to be a new running theme with council, being polar focused on color of one's skin and not the content of character or merit. We as a community sit back and wonder why council has shown via actions and words that they are focused on pushing the Marxist agenda of equity by codifying decisions, mandates, commissions, and ordinances that encourage discrimination, which create an us versus them attitude. What have you become? You swore an oath to uphold our constitution that states, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote a general buffer, and secure the blessings of liberty ourselves and our posterity." Our four founders knew we were not, nor ever were we going to be, a perfect nation, but we strive to be more perfect. Do you believe what the racist Robin DiAngelo says that a, quote, "Positive white identity is an impossible goal? White identity is inherently racist. White people do not exist outside the system of white supremacy," unquote? If you believe this construct, then I have news for you. You're a racist. We here in Livermore are more in line with the thinking that Dr. Alvita King affirmed to me this weekend, that, quote, "There is only one race, the human race. We are all brothers and sisters that bleed for the same color blood," unquote. In closing, I will remind you, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on the principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness," unquote.
The next speaker is a phone number, followed by John Marshon and Alice. Participant with the phone number, please unmute yourself.
This is Mony Lane. Not sure why it was a phone number. Thank you. Hello, Mayor Warner and city council members. On behalf of the Quest Science Center Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you and thank city staff for supporting our recent efforts to inspire people of all ages to explore the science and technology in our everyday lives. We are all so glad to be emerging from the worst of the pandemic. And at Quest, we're pleased to have recently completed two weeks of Volts and Bolts Summer Camp for middle school youth at the Bothwell Arts Center, begun construction of a shade sale pavilion on the site of the eventual Science Center on Railroad Avenue, a pavilion which can be enjoyed by the general public and will allow Quest to hold community programs, and held our first Science in Stockman's Park Family Event, which included making enormous bubbles. The second Stockman's Park Family Event will take place this Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00 PM on the topic of perception and will include some magic. We appreciate and will continue to depend on this strong partnership with the city in order to realize the potential for Quest Science Center to be welcoming, accessible, and of quality of life for everyone in our Livermore and Tri Valley community. We look forward to that future together. Thank you all.
The next speaker is John Marshon, followed by Alice. John Marshon, please unmute yourself.
Mayor Warner, members of the city council, the city of Livermore started the downtown planning process in 2003. The Lucky Site was purchased in 2007 with funds that required that housing be built on the site. In 2017, this downtown plan was developed with community input from thousands of residents and 19 represented stakeholder groups. This is an integrated plan that works to prioritize 10 key elements. And while they ranked differently, all elements must be included, such as cultural amenities, park space, a hotel, and housing. The community overwhelmingly agreed that the hotel should face Livermore Avenue. But there was a million dollar referendum that tried to confuse the voters and put it on L Street. The voters agreed two to one to keep it on Livermore Avenue. At this point, it is a false choice to ask, what would you rather have, a park or apartments? That is like a community planning for a school and a park, and then later asking the community if they want to eliminate the school in order to get a larger park. All of the elements were integrated together as a total plan. Alameda County has made it very clear that the $14 million A1 grant is not transferable to another site. This also puts over $50 million in tax credit financing in jeopardy. The Sierra Club passed a resolution, and now there is a sequel lawsuit that claims to express concern over the vapor extraction in Eden's proposed underground garage. There was soil contamination that was at least as bad across the street at the growth site, but there was no controversy for that project. Ultimately, that contamination was encapsulated under that parking structure. The same can be done at the Eden site. But it seems that the members of the group of many names prefers that the contamination should be left where it is. Astonishingly, in last week's Independent, a Sierra Club representative suggested that there be no cleanup. At the same time, we are hearing demands that this contaminated site should be used as a park and a children's playground. No, if this is no longer going to be a parking lot, responsible management dictates that the contamination must be mitigated. Since Eden recognized parking as a community priority, and they wanted to work with the community, so they included the underground parking garage, which increases the size of Veterans Park. However, if the existence of underground parking puts the project in jeopardy, the most obvious solution is for Eden to eliminate the parking, which according to state law is not required. This also saves the project about $6 million. This should be an agreeable solution for the group of many names, since they previously supported placing a 160-room hotel, which also did not provide any parking on this same site. Thank you.
Last speaker is Alice. Alice, please unmute yourself.
Hello, I am inviting everyone on this call, and Jackie Coda, who spoke earlier, might be interested, based on the things she said also, to join in a 50 states discussion of what it means to be a de jour form of government rather than a de facto form of government. The conversation will take place starting August 30th. You can find more information at the website dejureforsure.com, which is spelled D-E-J-U-R-E-four, number four, S-U-R-E.com. And again, the conversation will take place starting August 30th, though there will be some information on the website before then. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so we closed the public citizens forum. We're now on to the consent calendar and the, gonna ask if there's anybody, any member of the public that wishes to comment on any item of the consent calendar at this point. Is there anybody who wants to speak on that clerk's office?
Mayor, yes, we do have one speaker.
All right.
The next speaker is Carl Wentie. Carl Wentie, please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Carl Wentie, and I would just like to thank the city council, Mr. Mayor, all of the city council, as well as the great staff we have, volume of work that goes in to the government that we have, of the people, for the people, by the people. We do seek perfection, know that we will never get there. We have the worst form of government, except for every other form of government that has ever been. And just as we go through this, the openness, the transparency, but most important, the volume of work that goes in to that openness and transparency as items make their way through the system. So appreciation, appreciation to the staff, appreciation to our city attorney, appreciation to our city manager, appreciation to all of the staff as it flows on through, appreciation of those that run, appreciation of those that serve, those that step up on committees and that make this the best, the most perfect government that it can be in this moment, knowing that we're inherently imperfect, but we are all humans. We do all bleed that same color, red, but we are all of this, of this nation, of this city, and may we come together the best that we can and step forward, speak up, come, serve, be part of the government. What does it mean of the people, for the people, and by the people? So appreciation, again, those that wear a badge, that put on a bulletproof vest to go to work every day. I salute the, all of the, everything that goes into making this city what it is. I thank thee. That's all. Cheers.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak on the consent calendar?
There are no more requests to speak, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close public comment on the consent calendar and bring it back to the council. Is there any item on the consent calendar that someone on the council would like to pull for discussion? If not, would anyone, can I get a motion on the consent calendar? Okay, I see Councilmember Kick and then Vice Mayor Monroe.
I would, I'll move, but I do have one comment about a consent calendar item.
Sure.
So I'm moving that we approve the consent calendar and just want to recognize that there has been some community feedback about item 4.6, and today we're being asked to approve items that are ministerial in nature, not legislative. We're approving that final parcel map. And it's my job to approve a final parcel map, not make any judgments about whether businesses are good or bad. And I recognize there's been some harm done to the LGBT community by Chick-fil-A. But again, that is not my role here to state what kind of places I believe people should shop at. That's their choice. And so I'm stating, you know, that yes, I disapprove of those practices, but that's not why I was elected. I was elected to make sure that any businesses coming in here are following the code and what we asked them to do, and all legislative action took place in September. So I just wanted to make sure I recognize that because I got quite a lot of feedback and reminding people that they have every right to vote with their dollars and get their fried chicken elsewhere. So with that, I move that we approve consent.
Okay, we've had a, first, we have a second. Vice Mayor Monroe. I'm on mute. You're still on mute.
I was trying to. That was why I put my two fingers up. Yes, I second.
Okay, good. So moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I see Councilmember Carling, you've got your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to support Councilmember Kick's point of view. I recognize this is a ministerial vote, and I will vote in favor of the resolution presented to us. But back in September of 2020, when we had a Chick-fil-A representative come before us, that person claimed that there was no discrimination whatsoever within Chick-fil-A. And I reminded him that I didn't believe that for a second. He also suggested that most of the blame went to the media for misrepresenting Chick-fil-A's position with regard to equity and inclusion. And again, I find that at best, a weak argument. I think the vice, I also like just to conclude by saying the vice mayor, and I just concluded a series of meetings with community members around equity and inclusion and how to include everybody. And I don't see that Chick-fil-A's past practices and statements reflect the values that we hold in Livermore. And I just hope that somebody from Chick-fil-A may hear what we're talking about this evening. We need to vote in favor of this because it's a ministerial responsibility. But like my colleague, Councilmember Kick, I will not be participating in buying fried chicken at Chick-fil-A. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi. Motion, consent calendar passes unanimously. We're on to public hearings. So the first one is hearing to receive protests related to the non-payment of solid waste recycling, organic handling services provided by Livermore Sanitation for the collection of the county assessor tax rule. We have the staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'd like to introduce Marissa Gann, our recycling specialist, who will lead us through this item. Marissa.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and members of the city council. Tonight, the city council will consider approving assessments for the non-payment of services provided by Livermore Sanitation. There are approximately 26,000 accounts serviced by Livermore Sanitation in the city. As of this morning, there are only 39 accounts that are more than 12 months behind on their payment, making them eligible for an assessment. These debts are from unpaid charges from fiscal year 2020. The debt from these 39 accounts do not include any late penalties as Livermore Sanitation waived them if customers indicated they had been financially impacted by COVID-19 and if the customer account was in good standing as of November 2019. Despite repeated notifications from Livermore Sanitation, service reductions, and two notices from the city of Livermore, the accounts continue to be significantly overdue. Per the franchise agreement and the Livermore Municipal Code, the city is obligated to consider imposing assessments for these delinquent accounts. Customers had up until the beginning of this meeting to pay their bill and not have the property assessed. Staff continues to observe a decline in the number of assessments that are proposed each year. Almost two-thirds of the accounts on this year's list have been assessed in previous years, while more than 10% have been assessed every year. Staff recommends that the city council consider protests, adopt a resolution overruling the protests, and confirm the 2021 assessments, directing staff to forward a finalized copy of the assessment report to the county tax assessor. Thank you for your consideration, and staff are available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we come back to the council with questions and comments, is all open public comment on this item? Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on 5.1?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on 5.1. Councilmember Kick.
I just wanted to ask a question. So can you clarify? You said that there was under 47. I believe the staff report that's 47. So some payments have been made from the staff report till this morning. And then most of these accounts are not impacted due to COVID. These are, this is kind of a regular practice in, in the history of Livermore, where some people like to add these to their tax payments rather than, rather than the other way around. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They had up until 7:00 PM this evening to pay, and so when the staff report was published, that was the accurate number at that time, but a week or so. And we've had eight payments made on the accounts, so they're no longer in, they're no longer eligible for lien this year.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? I have one, is of the people have not paid, how many of them, this is, this, they've done this in years past as well. How many, what percent of that list is, you know, perennial kind of a problem?
The percentage I have here is, we have five of the properties that are leaned every, have been leaned every year since we've had a contract with Livermore Sanitation.
Okay, thank you. The, you know, the question I have is, what's the administrative burden to have to chase these delinquent accounts? Is that something that could be added to the, to the fees and somehow? Is that something we can consider?
It's mostly staff time by Livermore Sanitation. They have a staff that do that throughout the year, try to collect the bad debt. There's not too much city staff time spent on that, but the recuperation of the late fees that are assessed covers, definitely covers the the amount of the cost to Livermore Sanitation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll move staff recommendation. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further comment, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick. Hi. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. 5.2, we're on to, that was 5.1, we're now on to 5.2. Hearing to receive and consider all objections and protests related to the non-payment of sewer service provided by the city of Livermore for collection on the county assessor tax rule. We have the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. I'd like to introduce Anne Furtado, our accounting supervisor, who's going to lead us through this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. My name is Anne Furtado, and I am an accounting supervisor in the Finance Division of the Administrative Services Department. The city of Livermore provides vital wastewater services to the community that protect public health and the environment. These services include collection, treatment, and disposal of wastewater. Funding the cost of operating, maintaining, and improving Livermore's wastewater facilities relies solely on sewer service charges. The service charges for residential customers are billed via the Alameda County Property Tax Rule, and those accounts number in about 10,000. New residences receive bills from the city until they roll onto the property tax roll. These new residential accounts and all commercial accounts are billed monthly, and payment is due within 30 days. Any balance not paid within 60 days of the billing date is considered delinquent. As far as the commercial accounts, As far as the commercial accounts, we have about 1,200 that we bill monthly. Exhibit A contains a list of sewer accounts that are severely delinquent. In addition to sending out monthly bills that stated past balances due, city staff also contacted customers on the list to call attention to delinquent amounts. In cases where we felt there was a potential COVID financial hardship, and they did not have a prior history of delinquent payments, we did reach out with the Financial Hardship Form and are making payment arrangements with those customers, and they are not on this list. Per Livermore Municipal Code 13.36.210, the city may enforce payments of such delinquent charges by placing on the tax roll and collecting with property taxes. Letters were sent to affected property owners notifying them of the intent to assess their property and of the July 12th public hearing. Staff recommends that the City Council consider protests, adopt a resolution overruling protests, and direct staff to forward a finalized copy of the assessment list to the county tax assessor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll open a public comment on 5.2. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, close the public comment on 5.2, bring it back to the council. Any questions or comments? If none, can I get a motion, please?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kek. Aye. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. 5.2 passes unanimously. We're now on to 5.3, which is a public hearing landowner election and actions related to the formation of the Community Facilities District Number 2021-1, Maintenance and Public Services pursuant to the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982. Now, this is a little bit of a scripted process, and we have got the ballot has been received. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Well, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so I've got a few things I need to say procedurally, so bear with me. This is the time and place for the public hearing for Community Facilities District Number 2021-1, Maintenance and Public Services. The hearing is to inquire into the formation of the district, the formation of a future annexation area, and the levy of special taxes for municipal services in the district. The hearing is being held on Zoom, but we have arranged for written protests to be accepted until the conclusion of the public hearing in front of City Hall, located at 1052 South Livermore Avenue, Livermore, California. And before I formally open the hearings, if any property owners or registered voters in the district wish to file written protests, please deliver your comments to city staff in front of City Hall at 1052 South Livermore Avenue, or email the city clerk at cityclerk@cityoflivermore.net. That's cityclerk@cityoflivermore.net. The hearing is now open. We will first have presentations by staff about the district and the future annexation area. After that, we will receive comments and questions and any oral protest from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed. Can we have the staff presentation, please?
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, this is Mark Roberts, your city engineer, and I'd like to introduce Associate Engineer Debbie Salgado, who will lead us through this item.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are conducting a public hearing as a second step to forming Community Facilities District 2021-1. Formation of this district will provide maintenance funds through assessments for improvements that are installed with new development projects. The district boundary includes a future annexation area that coincides with city limits. This formation includes the first zone in the district for the Pearl Lodges project at the southwest corner of Isabel and Jack London Boulevard. All district assessment, excuse me, all district assessments will be specific to each new zone created within the district. The steps that were undertaken to form these districts are as follows. On May 24th, the council adopted a resolution of intention to form the CFD and set the date for the public hearing. July 12th, today, 2021, we are conducting the public hearing and a CFD election. On, if everything's successful, on July 26, 2021, we will adopt an ordinance to levy the special taxes in the CFD. And then finally, on August 10th, 2021, we will file the special taxes for the CFD with Alameda County for fiscal year 2021 and through 2022. Before I turn it over back over to you, Mayor Warner, staff is available for questions.
Okay, I'll ask the council at this point, if you have any questions. I don't see any. So then I'm going to ask for verbal comments, questions, and protests from the audience. And after that, we'll be taking a 10-minute break to gather any written protests received. So at this point, do we have any, anyone in the public that wish to make a verbal comment, questions, or protest from the audience?
Yes, Mayor, there is one public comment request by Jackie. Jackie, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I would like to strenuously object to the taxation, additional taxation that you are proposing to levy on homeowners and in the, in the city without representation, proper representation. This is unnecessary, and I believe that if you brought this to the public, people would realize that you are once again trying to punitively impose sanctions upon the citizens of our community, and we reject that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from staff wish to speak to that?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, we do want to be quite clear here that while the, the district covers the entire city, there is no assessment that is placed on any property other than phase one, which is the industrial property. And Associate Engineer Debbie Salgado can describe more precisely the area that will have a, a assessment placed on it. And the property owner, of course, does have the ability to vote on that assessment as they would on any assessment placed on private property. Associate Engineer Salgado, can you describe the property that is proposed to be assessed?
So, so at this time, only the, the property in Zone Set, Zone One, which is the Pearl Lodges property at the corner of Jack London and Isabel Avenue is being assessed. In the future, we will add new zones as development occurs, and additionally, only those properties within the new zones will be assessed.
So that's, this is your city attorney, if I may just further expand upon that. Territory in the future annex, and the future annexation area will only be annexed into the CFD, the special tax levied on them only with unanimous approval of the owner, owners of those parcels at that time that it is annexed into that new territory.
So I think what the staff has responded to is that the earlier public comment period is not germane to what's going on here. It's the okay, so at this point, do we have any other people that wish to speak?
Mayor, no, we do not.
Okay, so we'll close that portion of it on the oral comments, and we're now going to go into a 10-minute break to gather any written protests, and that will give the city clerk a chance to see what's going on. So we've got a 10-minute break, and we'll come back at the end of that. So that takes us to what, nine, I mean, 7:50?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We're returning from a 10-minute break in the process for item 5.3. At this point, I'm going to ask the Madam City Clerk, have we received any written protests?
Mayor, no written protests were received.
Okay, thank you. So now, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt two resolutions. First is a resolution forming a Community Facilities District and a future annexation area, and authorizing and directing actions related thereto, which will establish the district and the future annexation area. And second, a resolution calling a special landowner election for a Community Facilities District, and authorizing and directing actions related thereto. And this will call for the property owner vote to approve the special tax and the appropriations limit for the district. So I have a first and a second?
I'll move.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Banano.
I think that may have been
That was me, Kik.
But she's, I'll second. How about that?
Okay, fine. Yeah, I did, I couldn't tell which was right. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so moved by Councilmember Kik and seconded by Councilmember Banano. And I've got to ask, do we vote at this point, Clerk, City Clerk?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kek. Aye. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, the two resolutions pass unanimously. And at this next step is, will the clerk please announce the result of the property owner vote? Now, the city clerk must open the ballot on camera and then result, announce the result.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have our sealed ballot that we have received this afternoon. Mayor and councilmembers, the total number of ballots cast and the total number of votes cast for and against the measure are as follows. Qualified landowner votes were 20, total votes cast were 20, votes in favor of the measure were 20. All votes were in favor of the measure.
Okay, thank you. So the record shows, it was 100%, but that at least two-thirds of the property owner votes are in favor of the levy of the special taxes and the establishment of the appropriations limit. So now, I will entertain a motion and a second to adopt a resolution declaring results of a special landowner election for a Community Facilities District, directing recording of notice of special tax lien, and authorizing and directing actions related thereto.
I'll move whatever you just said.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Because I certainly could have repeated it.
Okay, the idea is we're declaring that we, that we received the election. Okay. So at this point, we vote again, I'm correct?
That's Mayor.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kek. Aye. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Passes unanimously. So we have one more item in this process, and I will now entertain a motion and a second to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance levying a special tax within City of Livermore Community Facilities District Number 2021-1, as the Maintenance and Public Services, and waive its full reading. I have a motion on that.
Move approval.
Okay, Councilmember Banano moves. Vice Mayor Monroe seconds. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kek. Aye. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and I'll point out that was, as I understand, 100% of the votes for the taxation, so fully represented and fully voted. We're on now to item 6.4. Designation of the voting delegate and, oh no, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong place. Let me get back to my other item here. Okay. So now we're on to 5.4. Hearing for the confirmation of the levy assessments for the city's landscape maintenance districts for fiscal year 2122. We have the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to introduce Sean Privet, who is going, is our management analyst two in public works, and is going to lead us through the item. Sean?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. The city currently has 92 landscape maintenance districts organized under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. In order to levy assessments to pay for the maintenance of these districts, the city must conduct a public hearing. On June 28th, the City Council approved the notice of intent and adopted tonight, July 12th, as a public hearing date. Each year, staff reviews the cost, maintenance level, and long-term financial stability of these districts. Staff then recommends the level of assessment required to meet both the short-term and long-term maintenance needs of each district. Staff has completed this process, and all the proposed assessments contained in the engineer's report are within the pre-approved caps. Staff is asking for the council to conduct the public hearing and then adopt the resolution confirming the level levy of assessments. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions from the council and comments, is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on 5.4, bring it back to the council for questions, comments, or result, motion.
Move approval.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Banano. And I'll second. So any further discussion? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kek. Aye. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. 5.4 passes unanimously. We're on now to matters for consideration. 6.1, oral report and slides from our emergent, Director of Emergency Services.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager and Director of Emergency Services, and if you'll give me just a moment, I will share my screen. All right, so this is our report for June 12th. So as you know, obviously, we are in the period post of the restrictions on outdoor activities and most indoor activities. Alameda County Health Services continues to monitor a number of cases within the county. And throughout the county, cases have doubled, more, more than doubled since early June. New cases are impacting communities primarily that have the lowest vaccination rates. And so the county continues, along with the CDC, to encourage folks to get vaccinated. In Livermore, we've seen our seven-day rolling average increase even further. We were fewer than one case per 100,000 in population, and now we are at 4.34 as of July 7th, so that's a four times increase here. So while we are making progress, we certainly are not yet done with COVID. You can see here on the screen, we have a slide showing the seven-day rolling average per 100,000 population of both Alameda County and the city of Livermore. You notice that the, the lines have tracked relatively recently. But you can sort of see here on my cursor, from early June, when our cases for a short period of time were less than one case per 100,000, to where we now are at more than four cases per 100,000. And you can see the county's curve here has also increased during the past few weeks since the middle of June. And you can see the county's curve here has also increased during the past few weeks since the middle of June. Our total cumulative case now count is four thousand four hundred. And as I noted before, our seven-day rolling average is four point three four. Related to vaccination data, you can see here that in Alameda County, over eighty-two percent of residents who are twelve years or older have at least one dose. And almost seventy percent are fully vaccinated. In Livermore, our at least one dose number is seventy-five percent. And fully vaccinated is sixty-three and a half percent. You can see our vaccination pattern here in this graph. You'll note in the center here, where the lines both drop, this is a percentage of eligible population, and that drop had to do with the expansion of eligibility when the minimum age dropped for those who could be vaccinated. And you can see that we continue to make slow and steady progress, but that we are a little behind the average in the county. City continues to partner with county and our health providers inside the county in getting information out through the city's website, social media, posters and signage, and the farmer's market. Stanford Healthcare Valley Care is conducting homebound vaccinations. They're working with our Meals with Wheels and Senior Support Tri-Valley nonprofits. And you can see the address to email, if you are interested in that program. And that is also listed on our website, so that is seabrit@stanfordhealthcare.org. Staff's coordinating with the county and Stanford Healthcare Valley Care to locate additional mobile vaccine clinics in Livermore, co-locating a vaccine clinic with St. Michael's Catholic Church with their Saturday food distribution program planned for July thirty-first, and a vaccine clinic at Main Nissan Park planned for August second. And I'll keep you up to date as more details arise from that. And staff continues reaching out to our faith-based organizations to provide up-to-date information to share with their communities should they so choose. We have ongoing clinics, including at Stanford Valley Care, Stanford Healthcare Valley Care. They will be moving their clinic just a few feet down the street from eleven nineteen East Stanley to eleven thirty-three East Stanley. So it's still inside that very same complex, but just one building over. So if you are interested in either a walk-in or an appointment, you can make an appointment or walk into Stanford Valley Care on Thursdays and Saturdays. Thursdays ten to two, Saturdays three to seven. And of course, appointments for children aged twelve to seventeen are administered by Stanford Children's Health and do require a parent or guardian to be present and sign off on the vaccination. Access Community Health Cares partnering with the City of Livermore to provide vaccinations at the Civic Center Library, which is located at eleven eighty-eight South Livermore Avenue. And that is by appointment, and the July hours of operations are Tuesdays and Thursdays, ten AM to four thirty PM. And we will continue to adjust those days and hours of operation for August, depending on demand. A quick update on the financial assistance. You'll see out of the dollars that the City of Livermore through the council has dedicated to these various areas, the vast bulk of those dollars now have been fully expended, and of course, that was by design. You recall that these dollars were earmarked early in the year when the need was greatest. Since then, both state and federal programs have come online. And of course, restrictions have been rolled back and businesses are, in most cases, with very few restrictions, able to fully reopen. The city, of course, also coordinated emergency orders and expansions of outdoor and retail flex zone changes. The emergency order remains in place because we have relaxed several rules, and we are depending on that emergency order in order to provide businesses that additional flexibility. In some cases, that means we've waived parking requirements so that private businesses can take areas that were dedicated to parking and create outdoor, either selling areas or outdoor dining areas, as well as expanding the downtown outdoor areas that are allowed in the public right-of-way. We expect at this point, if the numbers stabilize and return to their former levels, that we should conclude our emergency orders this fall. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, before we go to the comments from the council, is there any member from the public that wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, there is one member of the public, Jackie Coda. Please unmute yourself.
Cases mean absolutely nothing, and there is no emergency. According to Dr. Carey Mullis, who in nineteen ninety-three won the Nobel Prize in Chemistry for inventing the PCR test, had always stated that the PCR test being used worldwide by the WHO and the government health agencies to test for COVID-nineteen was never to be used for infectious diseases. The fact that corrupt bureaucrats are using this test to justify house arrest, shut down businesses, make people sick with dangerous mask mandates, and call for mandatory experimental injections is illegal and has no basis in science, only propaganda. So why aren't you canceling our emergency orders? Several cities and counties across California have done so already. What are you waiting for? CNN and MSDNC to propagandize the Delta variant, reaffirm the Stockholm syndrome you're all suffering from? According to the Health and Safety Code ten ten eighty, you are required to terminate the local health emergency at the earliest possible date that conditions warrant the termination. But for nefarious reasons, you continue. Why is that? I want to know your reasons. And don't point to the county or state. It all begins at the local level. Last year, many cities, including ours, declared local emergencies by identifying COVID-nineteen as an extreme peril that would likely overwhelm government resources absent swift action. Extreme peril is a legal standard for giving unelected staff decision-making authority normally reserved to elected officials. The public should be on alert. The government progressive scientific establishment continues to dictate policy outside constitutional republic process by appealing to public health equity, and citizens found themselves at the mercy of new soft totalitarianism. When the county or governor tries to put the public on house arrest again by using fear porn of cases in Delta variant, are you going to ask questions about science this time and uphold your oath to the Constitution instead of bending a knee to tyranny? When have we seen in the last year, when we've seen in the last year, Dr. Fauci, the CDC, the county, and you have been wrong about everything? There is and never has been extreme peril. You may want to live in fear, but tell me this. How many times in the last ten years have you been concerned about how many people you've killed spreading the flu virus? And when have we shut down an entire economy over the flu or pneumonia? The answer is never. We never should again, because you have no right to do so. It has been proven that this was all fraud perpetrated by some very evil people who should be charged with crimes against humanity. We've seen lab coat tyranny and bloated government power grab, all in an effort to Russian communism in America. It didn't start with gas chambers. It started with one party controlling the media, one party controlling the message, one party deciding what is truth, one party censoring speech and silencing opposition, one party dividing citizens into us versus them and calling on their supporters to harass them. It started when good people turned a blind eye and let it happen. Well, guess what? We're not blind, and we, the people, will not stand for the likes of you putting yellow stars upon citizens again. For once, do the right thing, cancel the emergency order.
Mayor, no more requests to speak, Mayor?
Okay, I'll close the public comment on six dot one. We'll come back to the council. Any questions or comments from the council? I see Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks, Mark, as always, for the report. I was curious about the rent abatement. Program seems to have slowed or plateaued. I don't, I don't remember what the number was the last time we met, but it doesn't seem to have changed markedly. So could you comment on that?
Councilmember Carling, that is correct. The, the program of, on the rent abatement, we are just cleaning up the last couple of folks who applied for that process. Since, of course, that time, there have been additional, essentially more generous programs approved at the state and federal level. So our local program is almost exhausted its funds, and we see very few additional applications at this point.
All right, thanks. I also am curious about the mobile vaccine clinics that are still three or four weeks away from now. And I'm just concerned, can we do that sooner? I mean, what's the limitation in terms of the dates?
Limitation is a couple of fold. We do coordinate those mobile vaccine clinics with the County of Alameda, and of course, our local healthcare providers. The mobile vaccine clinics, of course, are in addition to the two standing clinics that we do have in town by Stanford Valley Care Healthcare and Access Healthcare, which we're partnering with the library, and essentially most local pharmacies, which are providing, in many cases, both appointments and walk-ins. The, the mobile workshops were targeted with very specific communities, especially in those areas where there's been limited access, or where English as a second language may be a barrier. So we are sort of working case by case on those, both for location and partners to work with. But we do continue to work with the county to get them to come out here to this side of the county and help us with that process.
No, and I can only assume, but maybe it's a poor assumption on my part, that that area of town around Main Nissan may be a location where some of the more recent uptick has been shown. Is, do you know if that's true or not?
As we looked at this over time, yes, that does appear to be, it has been one of our hardest areas of the city. And we continue to work on that particular area. We are to the point now where one of the things that we do in advance of the mobile workshops is spend a lot of time on community outreach. And so that's another reason that we have these events coming up a little bit further out into the future. The time when sort of on a day or two's notice, we could get really good populations. You know, we vaccinated most of those folks. So that's why we're also running with a little longer timeframe.
I mean, I know we're offering, or somebody is offering rides to Access or to Valley Care. Is that, that information continuing to get out to folks most in need?
We continue as part of our overall strategy of getting information out to include information on transportation for those who have limitations with that. So yes, it is part of the messaging that we're putting out, and we're coordinating with the providers on that as well.
All right, thanks very much.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe?
Yeah. So I, I am concerned about the uptick that continues. And I see that that's a concern nationally as well. But since I'm not sure we have any control over that, I'm, I'm going to ask about children. And we're still on that stage where anybody under the age of twelve is not cleared to get a vaccine yet. Are we seeing any impact on children in particular? And is there anything we can do about that to either mitigate or forestall?
So you are correct. At the current time, the vaccine is not certified for members of the public eleven years of age or under. And in addition, both of the major, actually, all of the major vaccine manufacturers are working through the process to gain approval for younger members of the population that, so we do expect that to happen over time. And so the CDC has issued guidance on those in the population who are unvaccinated. And so those are continuing to be best practices for children as well, including distancing and masking in certain situations. So that is, that guidance for any member who is unvaccinated in the population is a best practice, applies to children as well. Of course, we do know that the state of California and of course, our local school district will be returning to in-person training in classrooms this fall. And so they have been working through the requirements of doing that. At the current time, for students and faculty, the recommendation is that they wear masks when they are inside in classroom settings in those locations.
Okay, Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Do we, do we know, will these mobile vaccination options be using Pfizer or J and J, Moderna? What, do we, do we know that the one and done is kind of a, maybe a good option for the mobile vaccination process? Do we have any information on that? And then I have another question as well.
Ultimately, normally, the county does share that information before we do have the clinic. I don't have it off the top of my head on those two that we mentioned tonight.
Okay, so if we have any ability to, to suggest or maybe encourage the single shot for those, for those vaccination mobile clinics, that would be great. Also, just picking up on the fact that, you know, a couple of weeks from now, it's not that long before we're going to have school again, and we can vaccinate all of our students twelve and up. It would be nice if maybe we coordinated with the school system on, you know, encouraging and providing maybe even an opportunity. I don't know if you can do that on the school site for vaccinations of our youth, if, if they are in fact among the groups that aren't getting vaccinated. And I just want to add also, just want to comment that Carey Mullis actually did win the Nobel Prize and invented the PCR method, but he died in August of two thousand nineteen, so I don't think he ever really had an opportunity during his lifetime to comment on anything related to the pandemic.
Okay, any other comments? I've got a, a couple of questions. First of all, I think you mentioned in your report that the primary, or maybe the only reason for keeping the order in place is to help businesses. Is that correct?
That is correct. In the absence of that, what we would need to do is immediately remove all of the outdoor seating that is in above the standard permitted by your municipal code. Municipal code normally requires parking for private uses, including commercial uses. And the emergency allowed that requirement to be waived. So many businesses across the community have expanded their operations relying on that emergency declaration and the ability for us to adjust rules during an emergency. In addition, all of those expanded flex zone areas in the downtown depend on that order. At this time, the order includes no restrictions of any kind for the city. Those are the only two orders that are depending on the declaration of emergency that remain. We have had requests from business owners to continue those orders in place, because we did ask, is everyone willing to go back to the old rules? The thing we heard back from our business community pretty loud and clear is they really wanted us to maintain the flexibility that, that the declaration had allowed us to do. However, it is appropriate to ultimately end that flexibility as we head into fall. And we have certainly told all of the businesses to expect to return to more normal operations as we enter the cooler months.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to point out. It's my understanding in talking with the businesses, they really want this help. And that what we're working through right now, and perhaps Councilmember Banano can speak to it a little more, we're working through now, what do we want the downtown to look like post-pandemic in terms of rules, and we're not necessarily going back to the way, exactly the way it was pre-pandemic. So right now, we're in this transition period where there are a lot of people who are still not completely comfortable indoors. And so I have heard from the businesses, they want to keep the outdoor rules that we have in place as long as possible. So perhaps on our website, you could, we could update some of the information here, because apparently, some people don't understand why these rules are in place, and they might think they're oppressive, where actually, they're very helpful, and they're being asked for by those that are being impacted. Councilmember Banano, would you want to say anything more, because you're the LDI liaison?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I, I think you say it just right. I mean, we are really, I think, the key here is to have good communications between the city and the businesses, between the businesses themselves, and to continue to just, just stay coordinated with our business owners, their customers, and people who, who enjoy our downtown. I think we're, we're again, communication is, is the key to it, and we're, we're having good dialogue. And I think we are, city's doing, staff's doing a good job staying in touch with businesses and kind of moving slowly, but letting businesses also, you know, work together to make sure everybody does the, the best they can during this period. So agreed, I think, I feel like things have, have moved along pretty well. What I'm hearing is that LDI, the businesses that work through LDI are all pretty, pretty happy with the efforts that they've gotten from staff and no, I disagree with what, I, I agree with what you say and think, think things are moving at the appropriate pace and, and to, you know, give everybody a chance to, to do the best they can as we come out of the pandemic.
Right, and you know, fall is the traditional period where we take the flex zones back to parking to help the retail businesses with the Black Friday and trying to make their numbers for the year during the traditional shopping season. During the traditional shopping uh season. So I think um perhaps a little more information on the website might be helpful. Uh just for those who don't understand what's going on and might be upset otherwise. Now, the other question I have for you is, uh with respect to the percent of new cases, and I, it's been tracked in other places. But within Alameda County, can we get the data as to of the new cases, what percent? Is among people who have not been vaccinated? And can we get that for a little more? And are we also tracking of the percent of the new cases that are the delta variant?
Very good, Honorable Mayor. Uh staff will reach out to uh county staff who tracks this um and see what information is available. And then make that information available um through links on our website.
Yeah, I, well, uh if I could go one step further perhaps. Uh we, we show the number of new cases, uh you know, on a daily basis, but if we do have the information. Uh I think having the number of new cases, the percent among the unvaccinated could be helpful. In uh the communications for those people who are hesitant to get vaccinated. So if we could modify that chart to show uh somehow indicate the percent. That's unvaccinated would be helpful. So are there, uh does that make sense to you?
Yes, we'll reach out to the county and we'll see what information we can get, and I understand the direction.
Okay, thank you. Any other uh comments from the council on this item, six dot one? If not, uh thank you very much, and we're on to six dot two. Uh discussion direction on building electrification ordinance for new construction. Can we have the staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your City Manager, and I'm introduced Associate Planner Tricia Ponto, who's gonna lead us through this next item.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yes, tonight we are talking about um the framework for the new construction electrification ordinance. And this is coming out of our climate action plan update, which the city has been working on since the beginning of last year. Um our proposed goal for the cap is to achieve uh net zero carbon emissions by twenty forty-five, which is consistent with state targets. Council reviewed the draft cap measures at the last city council meeting on June twenty-third. Um and those measures included actions to adopt reach codes requiring all electric new buildings. And expanding the requirements for EV charging stations. And these reach code, what's all, which I'll explain um more in a few slides, are intended to help the city reduce emissions from buildings and transportation. Which make up the majority of Livermore's emissions. So back in January, when we first started talking about building electrification, council directed staff to explore a reach code for new construction. Electrification concurrently with the cap update, since we have have some upcoming new development in the Isabel neighborhood specific plan and elsewhere in the city. So we wanted to take advantage of that. Um building electrification is one of the most effective and affordable tools available for cities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from buildings. Um and over forty cities in California have adopted some form of reach code for new construction electrification. And this is partially driven by the state, which has passed extensive legislation outlining new greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals. Including AB thirty-two thirty-two, which sets a specific target for building emissions. And then additionally, the state passed SB one hundred, which requires the electric sector to be a hundred percent carbon free by twenty forty-five. So as a reminder, the use of uh commercial and residential gas contributes to almost a quarter of the city's emissions. Um and on-road transportation accounts for over half of the city's emissions. So Livermore can achieve significant GHG reductions by electrifying buildings and vehicles, since electricity will. Become increasingly more renewable and carbon free over the next few decades. So what's a reach code? First, uh building energy efficiency standards are set by Title twenty-four of the state building code. But local governments can adopt more stringent requirements than what is required by Title twenty-four, and these are known as reach codes. Cause they reach beyond state requirements. Um the reach codes need to meet several requirements, including again, being at least as stringent as a state code, being cost effective. The city has to hold a minimum of two public hearings prior to adoption. The code has to be approved by the California Energy Commission, and the code needs to be re-approved every three years with each state energy code update. For the cost effectiveness piece, um all cities within the same climate zone and with the same utility provider have the same cost effectiveness study. Which was attached to the staff report. So for example, Livermore, Dublin and Pleasanton all have the same cost effectiveness study. Because we're in the same climate zone and have the same utility provider. So this cost effectiveness study analyzes different building types, including single-family and multifamily retail. And then different electrification packages, for example, electrification alone versus electrification with solar. Um and all the building types analyzed in the study have an electrification package that reduces both upfront costs and lifecycle costs. To also achieve on-bill savings, some buildings would need high efficiency appliances or additional solar. Um but developers are already to, already likely to build with high efficiency appliances and or solar in Livermore. Due to state energy efficiency and solar standards. So given these results, Livermore could pass an all-electric building ordinance that would cover all new building types. Uh allowing for exceptions in specific circumstances. For electric vehicle charging twenty, Title twenty-four already requires single-family residences, townhomes. And duplexes to have electric vehicle capable spaces, meaning spaces include the conduit and panel, panel capacity. Uh needed for a future charger. And then Title twenty-four also requires ten percent of EV capable spaces in multifamily and less than ten in non-residential developments. The draft cap measures recommend requiring twenty to thirty percent EV capable charging spaces. And at least one operational level two EV charger in new multifamily and non-residential developments. So for some more context about what EV capable and level two mean, again, the EV capable is conduit. And panel capacity required to accommodate the charger. EV ready is a step above that with a full circuit installed as well. And EV installed is another step up with an actual charger installed. And then level two chargers are sort of that mid-range charger where you can get a full charge in about four to six hours. As opposed to a level one, which is more of an all-day or overnight charger. And the DC fast chargers, which will charge a vehicle in about thirty minutes to an hour. So building electrification provides significant benefits um beyond just help reducing emissions and helping the city achieve its cap goals. But it also improves both indoor and outdoor air quality by avoiding exposure to natural gas fumes, which can lead to respiratory issues. It also lowers utility bills because renewable electricity is becoming cheaper while natural gas prices continue to rise. Uh electric buildings also support more affordable housing, cause they cost less to build and operate than mixed fuel buildings. Um that op- operate also using natural gas. And then finally, all electric buildings are safer because they avoid some of the hazards associated with gas pipelines. And they can also be re- be paired with solar and battery storage systems to operate independently from the power grid during and after an emergency. So staff's recommended framework is an all-electric reach code for new construction. That includes electric vehicle capability requirements. The purpose is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, reduce construction costs, improve air quality, support affordable housing. And increase the use of electric vehicles in Livermore. The ordinance could apply to all new buildings in Livermore, and developers can determine which electrification package is most appropriate. Um and we want to emphasize that this ordinance would not apply to remodels or additions to existing buildings. It would only apply to new construction. And then we could offer an infusibility waiver for certain situations that require the use of natural gas. So certain industrial processes may um require natural gas, and we could exempt them from these standards. So at council's direction, staff will draft an ordinance that outlines the purpose of the ordinance, the types of buildings that trigger the requirements. And any exceptions or exemptions to the standards. Staff has already started to engage with the community about building electrification through the cap outreach, but we will hold an additional public workshop. And a focus group with local developers to specifically discuss the new construction electrification ordinance. And then staff will return to the planning commission and city council likely in the fall with the ordinance for consideration. And if council adopts ordinance, staff will submit the ordinance to the California Energy Commission. Which has to verify the stringency and cost effectiveness of the code before it can go into effect. So staff recommends the city council provide direction on electrification ordinance for new construction, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and Ryan Gardner from Rincon Consultants is also here and available for questions.
Okay, I think I'd like to um open it up for public comment at this point. Do we have anyone uh in the audience that wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, there is one participant with their hand raised. Dr. Roger Logan, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear?
Yes.
The agenda packet has a thirteen-page study from Rincon on new building electrification. A table of BCRs is shown and was just shown a minute ago. All the costs seem incredibly low, but beyond that, there is not enough cost benefit or cost data. To see how these BCRs were done. If this is a purported basis for any cost effectiveness model, it is unacceptable. With the data provided, the BCRs are meaningless. I asked about this at the seven July cap Zoom and was given a web link, but there's no additional detail there that I could find. Other than a vague definition of TDV that contains an unspecified carbon cost. I did commend the cap Zoom stressing climate adaptation. Because water reservoirs, desalinization, and robust multi-source energy are key components of any climate action plan. From what I could hear, the dogs in attendance at the cap Zoom were barking to vocalize their freshwater concern. Since that is important to a dog. Adaptation is key because thanks to a free pass in Paris, top CO2 offender China. Plans to build more coal through twenty thirty, so all our USA and Livermore efforts will be for naught. On that note, rather than depend on vague studies with substandard BCRs, what about something really innovative? We are, after all, right next to two national labs. Have we thought about demonstrating a DAC plus CCS system for a new or existing multi-unit project? We in the labs could perhaps pioneer such a system, so we can keep the energy security benefits of natural gas. And fossil fuel benefits of cooking tasty few, tasty food for all our exhausted tourists. After they finally find a place to park. Leading-edge Livermore efforts such as proving out DAC plus CCS. Combined with a strong, efficient, and independent US economy may be the only ways to encourage and enable. The top climate offender nations to do their part for the earth. It was said last time that the price of doing nothing is incredibly high as well. The USA can easily do plenty and do our share without energy poverty or the need for homeowner or even business owner mandates. The price of China at L doing less than nothing per Paris dominates the climate risk. That is why I suggested these actions just now. And I would also like to thank uh Tricia for the presentation she just gave. It was very much. Uh put me and us more at ease, you know, than we were a few months ago. Uh thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to uh speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, there's one request to speak. M. L. Atkinson, please unmute yourself.
Uh I think I am muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to share those previous speakers' concerns about. What appears to be a very slipshod and inadequate review of the costs. There appears to be no real cost information based to, that went into the analysis. Um nowhere is the cost of electricity mentioned. Does the electricity that replaces gas come from natural fire plants? Which are much less efficient than home or gas appliances. These are very broad steps you're gonna take based upon what is a very. Uh superficial analysis unless there's a lot more information behind these numbers than we can see. Uh if we look at the on-bill energy costs, only um. Reasonable ones don't meet the cost affecting of this ratio. But if you look at the TDV value, uh they're quite high. Um so it makes you wonder what goes into the TDV value. Is there uh some unknown factor for saving carbon? While this may be a good idea, it would seem the council should make quite a bit more information available to those of us in the public. So we can understand the basis for the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Here, there are no requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the uh public comment on this item, bring it back to the council for uh uh questions, direction. Like Councilmember um Banano.
Yeah, thanks very much for that report, um Ms. Fanto, and and for all the work Rincon put into it. So could you say a little bit about um the tools used to develop these um benefit cost ratio? And um total uh time-dependent valuation numbers that are in the report. Um I think they're based on fairly industry-standard tools that that develop these uh results. You might wanna just comment on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn that one over to Ryan Gardner from Rincon.
And I have a couple more after that. Thanks.
Uh yeah, so these results are coming directly from the state's local code, codes and standards program. Um which is statewide program supported by the utilities. Um where they conduct cost effectiveness studies of reach codes. They've been doing this for very many years. Um so the cost of electricity goes into that, the current grid mix goes into that, it's broken out by climate zone. They do energy modeling for building types in each climate zone, so it's really specific to the energy usage that we see. Um in Livermore's climate zone, which I believe is twelve. Um and it also takes into account the efficiency of current products. Um whether they're kind of the low-end electrification um with resistance he- heating or the higher efficiency, which is referring specifically to heat pumps. Um and then they build out different prototypes or example building types, um which is kind of consistent with what's being built in California today. Um and then they can run the models and determine what the cost effectiveness is going to be. So yeah, none of this is, this isn't a Rincon report. Um it's a statewide um and very well-vetted. Uh program that's been established and backed by the utilities, CPUC, CEC. Yeah, so any other specific questions? Uh you asked about TDV. Um so yeah, the, the baseline. For being able to approve or or adopt a reach code is the time-dependent valuation. And that does take into account more things than just um on-bill. It also takes into account the cost of infrastructure, the time that you're using electricity um or energy, it's really important. And then there is a social cost of carbon piece in there, which I don't know how much they attribute to that off the top of my head. But there is a full um detailed methodology that you can get off of the local codes and standards website. That goes into much more detail about those specifics and also um all the efficiencies of the equipment they're using. Um the emission factors for the electricity they're assuming uh and all of that.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Um seems pretty clear to me that, that um for new construction. Putting the electrification infrastructure in and and the costs over both over time and on bill is is pretty clear. Um particularly since national gas, natural gas prices um are going up and are expected to continue to go up. So I have a couple more questions. Um so who gets to decide what, does the developer get to decide what for new construction? Will the developer decide what package gets installed, or how how will that be accomplished? Do they pick the one that's, you know, cheapest, even though they're all cost effective, or does, does anybody else oversee that?
Yeah, so I think one caveat to remember is that these packages are kind of discreet. Building prototypes or building models that the local codes and standards group has developed. Because there's, you know, umpteen different ways of building new construction. Um so these are meant to kind of model possible outcomes. So every building is gonna be slightly different and have different um ways that they're constructed. From my experience in discussing with developers, the most cost-effective way to reach. The Title twenty-four efficiency requirements is by having efficient appliances. Um and that's also where developers are able to kind of get the highest sale of their buildings. Um as opposed to using like more insulation or better windows. Um or, you know, increased attic insulation. It's really about having just more efficient appliances. Um and that's generally how people are gonna reach that goal. It's hard to. It's hard to meet Title twenty-four with inefficient appliances because you'd have to do a lot more on the insulation side. So you still have to hit be as efficient as the Title twenty-four.
Okay, uh, great, thanks. And, and the, I have two more quick things, hopefully quick things. The criteria for exemptions, I, I understand that that's gonna be with the community development department or director. Do we have any idea of how that's gonna look? I mean, are, are businesses, are homeowners able to ask for exemptions or, well, not homeowners, developers? Businesses, is there any insight into how we're gonna handle exemptions? Has this been done in other cities and we sort of know what it looks like?
So, go ahead, Tricia.
Um, so that what we put in the framework is the community development director, but it doesn't necessarily have to be there. I have seen other cities where they leave that jurisdiction up to the planning commission or some other higher authority. I don't, you know, I think that's kind of up to us how we wanna decide who gets the authority to make those decisions. Um, I don't personally know what the waivers themselves look like. I think maybe Ryan can speak to that about that process of how people apply for a waiver.
Yeah, sure. Um, other cities are kind of working through this and have some in place. Um, San Jose, Oakland, Sacramento is kind of in the process right now. And, yeah, there's different ways that you can set it up, but generally, um, anyone could ask for an infeasibility waiver. But it would be on them to kind of demonstrate what that looks like. And other, some other jurisdictions, I know San Francisco kind of has a guidance document that they've developed that provides some guidelines on where and when infeasibility waivers would likely be granted. But ultimately, it would be up to you, um, as a city to kind of determine that process.
Oh, and, and I presume before we approved an ordinance, we'd know a little bit more about what the exemption process would look like. I'll just leave that there. I assume that would be part of what we approved. The, the last thing I wanted to mention in, and I know other people wanna, wanna get in here is about the EV charging. I think that's a really important part of this. I think that, you know, the biggest piece of the pie with respect to GHG emissions is transportation and laying the, the infrastructure, getting ahead with infrastructure, although not too far ahead, ahead enough so that it, it's not an obstacle to people getting electric vehicles and getting out of their cars. There's gonna be a time at which we're not gonna be able to buy new gasoline-fueled cars, et cetera. So I think this is a really important part of this. I'd like to talk, um, or get other people's opinion about how we move forward with the EV charging infrastructure and the difference between capable, EV-capable and EV-ready, I think is really important. You know, were we going not far enough by just going EV-capable when in fact there's a lot of costs to be saved upfront by running the wires and getting a little farther closer to the point where you actually can charge a car as opposed to just putting raceways and, you know, making the breakers big enough and having raceways for the cables. Maybe we should think about laying the cable. So that's part of what I'd like to get a, get some other viewpoints on, on, on where do we land on twenty to thirty percent maybe proposed in the measure at this point in the cap plan measure. I, I just think we need to, we need to talk about how far we go in terms of percentages of stalls and what type of charging capability or readiness are we actually going to put into this package. So I'll just leave it there, but I, I would hope we could talk a little bit about that.
Councilmember McCarling.
Well, uh, thanks to my colleague, uh, was, that was exactly the topic I wanted to bring up is EV charging. I think in a minimum, it needs to be EV-ready. I mean, if I'd look, I mean, if I was to take the Sacramento brochure, just as an example, EV-capable was eight hundred dollars, for eleven hundred dollars, you can get EV-ready. And it certainly seems to me that that at a minimum is worth, uh, worth, uh, the cost. So, uh, to Councilmember Bonanno's point, I mean, I, I'd like to be more aggressive, but I, but I, you know, I, I also understand that we're looking for for probably compromises here and how much capability we put in. But at a minimum, I think, um, residences, for example, need to be EV-ready at a minimum. I'll leave it at that, uh, at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Kik.
Yeah, I, uh, again, agree that as EV-ready. And I'm, I'm wondering a little bit about, you know, I understand that this is a reach code and that maybe not having, um, discussing what the reach code looks like, but also talking about what kind of carrot approaches we will be taking to, um, encourage people to put the chargers in already and the number of them. And, you know, DC fast chargers would be great, especially for multifamily housing. There's not that many parking spaces if everybody has electric cars. So just kind of want to see what, what that looks like at some point. Uh, in addition, I just wanted to clarify that this cost effectiveness is necessary, um, if it's cost-effective for the resident, the owner, and the developer. And if it wasn't cost-effective, we'd have to prove that it was cost-effective for the community at large. But because it is cost-effective for the resident, the owner, and the community, that means that it is also cost-effective for the community at large. Am I correct with that statement?
Is that in regards to the building electrification?
Yes.
Yeah, so the cost-effectiveness study looks at the time-dependent evaluation, yeah, it takes into account the upfront savings and then the long-term costs and savings. So upfront costs and savings versus long-term costs and savings. On-bill looks at just what the person living in that building or, or working in that building would see. And then time-dependent valuation looks at the kind of whole life cycle of that building and its downstream impacts on like the grid and the costs and benefits associated with that. And you, in order to adopt a reach code, need to be time-dependent, valuation, cost-effective.
Right, okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify. Some people had asked me, does this only help the people that live in that building? And I was like, well, no, it, it does affect the entire community at all. I just wanted to make sure I had that correct. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, I, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't have a lot more to add other than I was very, I, I just, I, I want to pull out the benefits of building electrification. I've known about them, but seeing them laid out here really made an impact. Just in terms of, this is economically beneficial, this is environmentally beneficial, this is health, that it benefits health, it benefits housing. Seems like a win, particularly since what we're doing is we're talking about new construction, not not, not the hard job of retrofitting. So because of that, uh, this, this is, this seems to me to be a, a very well-thought-out plan. Um, as with my colleagues, the, the point about, um, most of, more than fifty percent of the, uh, emissions of, from transportation, mitigating that seems to be, I, 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 sure, EV-ready, whatever we think we, we can do because the climate's not actually waiting for us to be ready to take steps one at a time. The climate's changing around us pretty darn fast. Um, so EV-ready, level two, sure. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I would, uh, wanna know a little bit about why EV-ready wouldn't be the, uh, the default option. And my assumption is that if you pull wires through the conduit, you're presuming that you know what the circuit's gonna look like and what's gonna be on the other end. So I think there's a chance that the wires you would want may not be the wire that you would put in now, may not be the wires you want, especially if you're gonna go to the DC fast charging and everything else. So I think, before I would just say, yeah, EV-ready, I'd like to see the analysis that says that we're sure that the wires that are put in before the chargers would be put in at the other end are actually the wires that you would want as the, uh, charging technology evolves. So there's gotta be some analysis because otherwise you'd say, yeah, just put the wires in. But my presumption is that all the wires aren't the same. And so that you, you're, if you put wires in too early, you're precluding possibly some options, but I don't know. Uh, but I would like to see the, uh, analysis that says that you can be relatively sure that if you put wires in, they're the right wires. Uh, Councilmember, um, oh, the other thing I was gonna say is, I, I know you've got this thing in here about its, uh, remodels and everything would not be, um, subject to this. I think we also want to put in big red bold that existing construction is, I mean, existing homes are not being converted. I know it would be obvious, but that, we've seen in multiple cases, people get spun. Uh, so I think I'd put in bold red, this doesn't touch existing construction. So, Councilmember Bonanno.
Yeah, I just wanna agree that I think we have to be careful about the technology we are adopting today that might be, look a little different. So I, I, I'm guessing that other cities have debated the same question. I don't want to put in wires that are useless once it comes to, uh, you know, that, that's not smart. And I, I would, don't, I don't think we're gonna do that. So there, we, we have to find a happy medium where we, where we get ahead of it a little bit, but not too far ahead of the technology so that we end up wasting money rather than saving money. So I agree completely and hopefully there's some, uh, work that's already been done. Ground has already been sort of laid for how cities think about getting the EV-ready technology implemented, but without, with making sure it's gonna, it's gonna actually work. I think the other thing we maybe want to give staff a little guidance on is the percentage. You know, EVs make up a fairly small fraction today, but I think the projections for how many electric vehicles are gonna be on the road as a fraction of our total fleet in California is gonna go up dramatically, particularly as we stop, we prevent the, uh, car dealers in California and some of our car manufacturers are no longer be producing gas vehicles. So there'll be a lot of legacy vehicles, but it's over time, we're gonna have a lot of EVs too. And maybe fuel cell vehicles as well, I'm sure we will. But, so I think we also, do we want to think about giving staff a little guidance on what percentage to be thinking about in addition to exploring the cost assessment of EV-capable versus EV-ready versus state of the technology?
Go ahead.
Well, as I said, I think a hundred percent of new residents, single-family homes. Are you asking about the multifamily units?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm asking for all of it. I mean, the measure currently says twenty to thirty percent. And I, I think that applies to
I thought that just applied to molly family.
Yeah, so what do we wanna, what, 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 I, I don't think we have to make a decision tonight, but we wanna give staff some guidance for the final ordinance that we get presented with.
Do you have a suggestion?
Um, I'll just put a number out there and see what, see what other folks say. Let's say thirty-five percent. Someone to argue me, argue me up or argue me down.
It's as good as any number.
Right, any number is, you know, right now gonna just come back to us in the draft, so.
Yeah, I guess I would be interested in not, sorry, I did not raise my hand.
Yes, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Go Vice Mayor Monroe, sorry.
Okay, um, I, I would, I would actually like some guidance, well, I, I would, I would say even, let's go even higher. And the reason I'm, I'm saying that is that, um, I know a number of people. This is anecdotal evidence, take it for what it's worth, it's not data. But I know a, a number of people who are waiting on getting electric vehicles until the infrastructure is ready for them to do it. So, uh, the more we provide the infrastructure, the better that will be. And we're talking people, we're talking about, well, talking about my, my mother who just purchased an electric vehicle, but she did get the stuff, you know, she does have a, she, she, she had the, the electrical stuff in her garage. So that worked. But when we're talking about people ranging the full spectrum of age, waiting to get electric vehicles so that they can travel, so that they can move, the least we can do is to, uh, do the maximum, the maximum we think the traffic will bear. And I'm, I'll, I'll just throw out fifty percent just for the hell of it.
Councilmember Kik.
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, um, I, I would like to see, um, I would like to see what the cost-effectiveness is because I don't, I don't want this to affect, to discourage development in any way, um, because we have housing crisis. So, um, what, what's a good balance? And then also, we know it's what, twenty thirty-five, we'll have no more gas vehicles sold in California. So there's some sort of timeline in which we'll start to see, um, the necessity for it to at some point be a hundred, right? But is that in twenty years? Is that thirty years? What's the lifetime of a vehicle? When do people generally buy new vehicles? We also have a chip shortage. Um, so I think we'd need to see a lot more before I was comfortable with, um, throwing out a number. But if those, those data points could be included in, in some sort of analysis, that would be appreciated.
So I would want to build on the, uh, the thought here. Are you done at this point, Councilman? So I, I think that's the key here is an analysis. So we have, it can be anywhere between zero and a hundred, and right now we're talking more the better. But there has to be in anything like this, a, uh, you know, it's a constrained problem and you're trying to optimize it. So what is it as you go to higher and higher, you're getting, you know, something else is being impacted. So I think we need an analysis before we just start passing numbers out. What's the, how do you, how do you compute a, uh, the, uh, business case? How do you do it? And the thing that I would want to, uh, point out is we're talking about new construction. And if you think about our population in the city, what fraction of the population is gonna live in new construction versus the existing construction? So that's, that's a, uh, a question. And then, you know, pushing too far on the new without thinking about the existing, uh, may be not the right way. And for instance, most people with existing construction in exist, in single-family homes and who buy an electric vehicle can handle it. I mean, you can, I bought an electric vehicle, I'm using just the one-ten stage one and it's not a problem. Because, you know, you can do that, but I'm, I'm gonna spring for getting the level two, right? I think that the, a question that we might want to think about is how do we help the people in existing multifamily units get access? Cause they're, you know, and what's the, what proportion of our population is in those kind of units versus single-family versus new single-family versus new multifamily? And I had been talking to the city manager earlier of what can we do to help people in multifamily have access to quick charging? And it does without, you know, something that the city might be able to enable in its various, uh, places in conjunction possibly with the park district and the school district. So I think before we pick a number on just new construction or multifamily, we ought to think about what percent of the population is that? And are there more cost-effective ways to reach a higher proportion of people? So I just say, I think it's a good question, but let's have an analysis before we pick a number. Is where I'm at. I see Councilmember Kik, uh, you have your hand up again? Okay, so, uh, the, uh, city manager, do you remember the, uh, conversation we had about that? Is there anything you would want to add at this point?
Honorable Mayor, no, uh, I think we have direction, uh, from you on the additional information that you need. We will, uh, bring back a draft ordinance for your consideration. Um, we'll have a recommendation, um, as well as an analysis of sort of the range of options. Um, we'll do some benchmarking with, uh, communities that are also, uh, in the process of adopting their electrification ordinances and their EV charging ordinances um, to give you a sense of both what the data is. Um, and we can very easily provide you, um, the percentage of, uh, existing multifamily units that exist in the city versus single-family detached. And you, of course, are aware, the vast majority of our homes are, uh, single-family homes versus multifamily. But that is flipping and our new construction, the vast majority will be multifamily, uh, units. So we'll provide that data for you, uh, as well when we return with the ordinance.
Right, and I think that when we start to pick a percentage, we have to think about what are the alternatives for the people in these multifamily units to conveniently charge their vehicles? We have, we have, so just think about the whole, uh, range of options here, not just pick one. Uh, you know, and the other thing that I would want to say is that we heard a couple of public comments tonight about the, uh, more uh, transparency on the, uh, cost-benefit ratio. And I think we've had several council members speak to it. And I know we spoke to that particular, uh, cost effectiveness issue when we last saw this. So I would ask that uh, whatever calculations are available, that it be easy for members of the public to get to them, to understand them. And it's one thing to say we have whatever the state algorithms is and we're, and trust us, it's another to uh, really expose the details of the calculation. So I think I heard a request to make sure that those are, uh, available to people. Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, I just want to, um, agree that we need to look at our existing capabilities for people that aren't living in new construction. I think that's very important, and that will undoubtedly be a larger percentage of the people that are affected by what they, what we might do in new construction. But this was a topic on new construction, and, and we were discussing what we were gonna do in new construction. But I agree, the, uh, and, and you asked me for a number, so I put one out there. But a range of study would be good for us to, to see when you come back with this. But, um, I do support us looking at how we're gonna make this kind of technology available for people that aren't living in any new of the buildings. So I just.
I, I, I think you sparked a good conversation, and then, you know, I wasn't thinking about it until you mentioned it. I mean, we have to, uh, we, we really need to have the methodology for picking the, uh, numbers. And it's, so it's a good question. I, I actually believe, you know, my own preference would be to make it as high as reasonable. Because we've, we've heard that there's, we're gonna be going to, you know, no gas combustion, uh, engines. But we're also on track in the state to go to, uh, renew, all hundred percent renewable electricity. So it's not a question of burning other things. I, I think, I, I, you know, and, but that other, in the public comment, I, I'm not sure if this is the same thing, but there have been articles pointing out how the South in the US is being harmed by the people in Europe wanting to be quote, green by burning the trees. So they have renewable charcoal or whatever they're doing. So I, I think, um, we gotta be careful of what's happening. So any other, uh, comments on this point? So, and sta- and, uh, city manager, you said you have enough comment on this?
Yes, we have the direction we were looking for this evening. Um, we'll return to you, um, with a draft ordinance, uh, and the information, additional information you requested.
Okay, thank you. And I want to give people an update on the, uh, where we're at. Now, we've traditionally taken a break at nine, but we had a break for the, uh, the, that other item. So I would suggest, if it's okay with the council, that we get through, uh, seven, and then we take the break to go back into the closed session. Does that work? Can I get head nods on that? Okay. So thank you. So now we're on to, um, six, three. Uh, this is gonna be very extensive conversation. Approval of the city council twenty twenty-two meeting calendar. Uh, can we have a staff report?
Honorable mayor, um, our city clerk, Marie Weber, will be giving a presentation on that one.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. In accordance with the city council rules of procedure, each July, the city council approves the annual calendar for regular meetings and workshops in the coming year. Regular meetings are generally scheduled on the second and fourth Monday each, of each month, with workshop meetings being scheduled on the third Monday of each month, and only used when needed. Meetings are not scheduled on legal holidays, and in keeping with past practice, only one meeting is scheduled during the months of August and December due, due to lack of pressing business. Tonight's staff recommends city council approve the two thousand twenty-two city council meeting calendar, and with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, before we go there, any, uh, public comment on this item?
Yes, mayor, there is one request to speak, and Nicole Thomas, please unmute yourself. Nicole Thomas, please unmute yourself.
I believe she may have had her hand raised from the previous item.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I, I, I think I clocked in earlier and post the, the subject of, um, COVID reports. So I don't know if now's a time that I can speak on that subject.
Uh, no, I don't think so. We've opened and closed that. Uh, did you have your hand raised on that one at the time, and it wasn't seen? Because I think the, uh, staff looked and didn't see it. So I think that, that opportunity has passed. We're on the, uh, we're talking now about the meeting calendar.
Yes, I know. I, I had raised, I think, just a few seconds after it was closed. So unfortunately, I, I suppose I'm too late to speak on that.
Well, there'll be next time.
Okay.
It's gonna be there every time. So, okay, unfortunate, yeah, you gotta, gotta get it in time. Uh, all right, uh, so anyone else want to speak on the meeting calendar?
Mayor, there are no other requests to speak.
Okay, close the comment on that, um. The, uh, any member of the, uh, council want to speak to this item, or do you want to get a motion?
Move approval.
Okay. Okay, moved. And secondly, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kik?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye, passes unanimously. We're on to six, four. Uh, designation of voting delegate and alternates for the twenty twenty-one League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. We have the, uh, staff report, please.
Honorable mayor, city clerk Marie Weber will give the staff report on this item.
Good evening again, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Each year, the League of California Cities holds an annual business meeting where league membership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish league policy. The league's annual conference is scheduled for September twenty-second through twenty-fourth of this year at the Sacramento Convention Center, including the annual business meeting being held on September twenty-fourth. In order to vote during the business meeting, the city council must designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates. The voting delegate and alternates must be registered to attend either the full conference or September twenty-fourth only. Currently, all members of the city council are registered to attend the conference. Tonight's staff recommends the city council appoint one voting delegate and up to two alternates to represent the city at the twenty twenty-one League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting, and with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, I'll, uh, first ask, is any public comment on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, open and close public comment on that. I, and I also believe I've got the, uh, it's up to me to make the appointments.
Actually, mayor, it is a city council vote for this item.
Oh, it's a vote, okay, good. All right, uh, we have a, uh, nomination. Anybody care to make a nomination for the, uh, voting delegate and alternates? Councilmember Kik?
I would nominate Vice Mayor Monroe, because she is the member of League of Cities, if I'm not mistaken.
And what about the two, let's get the alternates at the same time.
Oh, we have two alternates?
Right.
There was one alternate. Um, I nominate anybody else who would like to do it. Would anybody like to nominate themselves to be the alternate? I'm happy to be an alternate, but I don't have strong feelings, so.
Uh, ca- councilmember Carling is, uh, I think the alternate on LSCC, so.
Right, okay.
Perfect.
Okay, so you're moving Monroe for the vote, and councilmember Carling for the alternate, and did I hear you say you would like to be the second alternate?
I can, if councilmember Banano wants to do it, I'm happy to give that over to councilmember Banano.
Oh, you're, what about me? So, anyway, just make the motion and see if.
Yes, I move that it's Vice Mayor Monroe with Carling as the first alternate and me as the second alternate.
Okay, now, I'll ask councilor Banano, or if you want to second that, or do you want to be the, the second alternate? You know, this is a big deal.
No, I'm happy to, I'm happy for, uh, councilmember Kik to be the second alternate. I'm going to the conference. I'm sure it'll be a very exciting conference, and I don't, I don't need anything more than to attend the conference, which I'm doing, so, thank you for thinking about it.
The chance that the second alternate is actually gonna vote is, uh, like, zero. Anyway, um, okay, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, uh, councilmember Kik, do you want to say more on it before we vote?
Nope, let's vote.
Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kik?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor Monroe is the, uh, voting delegate, and Carling and Kik are the first and second alternates. Uh, with, um, okay, we're now on to agenda item seven. A committee reports and matters initiated by the city manager, and I'm gonna, uh, I mean, I typically go on order here, and the way we're gonna be positioned on the dais. And I, as I recall, the order that we've gone in is, uh, councilmember Kik is off on my far left, so we'll, we'll start there.
Yes, so, um, before I start with my report out and matters initiated, I have a point of personal privilege. Um, there have been a significant number of comments about a poor choice of words I made at a meeting. Um, and so I would like to clarify, um, what I should have used as a better choice of words, and I believe in taking responsibility for your words, um, because they matter. Um, so I believe I said something like, if we all chose fifty-year-old white men, we wouldn't have great representation. Um, but the correct wording would have been, I believe it's very important to have a wide variety of opinion on a group, um, that's doing something as important as the general plan. So I take responsibility for those words. That is something I believe very strongly in, um, in leading by example by saying, I can do better. Um, I'm gonna move on to report out. Um, I was happy to be a keynote speaker at Livermore National Laboratories, um, for an event they had for Pride Month, so that was, that was pretty special. Um, I had a regular EVCE meeting. Um, I went to farmer's market a couple times, um, and talked about, um, uh, some new, a new app with the fire department, so you can get, um, direct updates about if you ever need to evacuate. It really pinpoints you right there. Um, and I cannot remember the name of the app now that I am speaking about it. Um, but our fire department is talking about it a lot, so just go check it out there. Um, and we had Benny out at the farmer's market talking about composting with kids, so that was nice. Um, I also had the opportunity as the EVCE representative to go to a Roots soccer game. Um, Roots is, um, an Oakland soccer team, and they are having home games in Livermore, so, um, that, it was very fun. There's gonna be another one on Wednesday and another one on Saturday. Um, you can go out and enjoy some soccer at Las Pecitas. The tickets are only five dollars. Um, and you can learn about green energy at the same time. Um, so those are my report outs. I do have one matters initiated. Um, so based on the climate action plan and my belief that it's important to lead by example, um, and our drought, um, I would propose that staff look into decreasing the amount of acreage that we have on municipal properties. So properties owned by the city that we use for ourselves, um, to decrease the, the lawn that we have. Um, and focus instead on drought tolerant landscaping, um, and I would leave that up to the staff's discretion on, um, which facilities would take priority in order that we would look at that. I know we have multiple facilities. Um, I would like maybe all of our properties to be um, converted at some point, um, but I'll let staff decide what's the best place to start. Um, if that's the will of the council, and if that makes sense to, um, our city manager, that's my suggestion.
So did we get other head nods? I'll put mine in for a head nod. Are there others behind that one? Okay, so you got it?
Great.
We will, uh, we will, uh, develop a plan, um, for conversion, and we'll, uh, provide a memo back to the council on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Carling.
I'm at the other end, but okay.
Or you, no, well, uh, I, I don't know how it changed up, but it was, I, 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 I don't, I think I get to determine this, but it, we've always gone through with, it was councilmember Kik, then you on my left, then councilor Banano, and then Vice Mayor Monroe, and then myself, so.
Well, that's okay, except I'm at your far right, so, okay.
No, you should be on the, to my left, but.
Not according to the city clerk, but okay. Um, uh, I don't have any report out other than I did want to mention that on July seventh, uh, I was over at, um, Goodness Village. We kind of had a, um, reunion, if you will, of the folks that went to Austin, Texas a year ago February, just before the shelter in place. So that was in February twenty twenty, a group of forty or fifty of us went to Austin to look at, uh, the, uh, tiny village there, and, um, I'll say that, uh, the, the lunch that we had at, uh, Crosswinds was very nice, and then there were some folks that had not, uh, seen Goodness Village yet, so it was an opportunity for some folks that hadn't, uh, seen what it looks like, and there's been quite a few updates since the last time I was there, which was a couple of weeks ago. The landscaping is in, they have some privacy fencing up, and, uh, six folks have moved in. And so I think it's, um, moving apace, and, um, they expect to have them completely occupied. I think the estimate was in September. Um, so there's still some work to be done on some of the units that aren't quite, uh, they're located there, but they haven't got all the amenities just yet. Uh, but, um, they do have staff there. Um, and of course, there's people, there'll be staff there twenty-four hours a day. But it's really looking quite nice, and I think the six folks that have moved in are, um, I guess relieved in some respects, but also very happy that they have a roof over their head. And so I would encourage you, anybody that's interested, uh, to take the opportunity to go out and visit. And if you have a chance to volunteer, please do. So that's my report out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick things. Um, one, I attended my first LAVTA meeting this evening, right before this meeting, um, as a board member tonight, and that was, uh, taking the place of Mayor Warner, so I enjoyed, uh, getting, starting to get up to speed on that activity. Um, I'm sure I'll have more to report out in the future on that. Um, I did want to mention something that a few members of the community have brought to my attention over the past few weeks, and, and I just wanted to bring them up here. Um, you know, I think we've seen that a lot of people are coming back to the downtown, which is great. Um, there definitely seems to be a pent-up demand for dining, listening to music, live music, and generally just congregating around town with friends and family. Um, I, in addition, we've also begun using several new shared public spaces, like the areas around Stockman's Park and the reconfigured area around the flagpole. You know, there's just a lot of excitement around uh, being back together and back out, um, in public again. Um, as Lane mentioned, the Quest Science Center event at Stockman Park, Stockman's Park that was held a couple of weeks ago, and I attended that event, and it, it really was a great event. It was very well attended. It was a lot of fun and educational activity for families. Um, concurrently, there was another event taking place that really wasn't compatible with the Quest event. And I just think we need to take a look at our permitting and policy, permitting policy and procedures for utilizing public spaces for these kinds of special events. And to, among other things, make sure there's a process to avoid activities be- being planned in the same space and time that just might not mesh well. Um, I think there are some lessons learned that we should try to capture and incorporate moving forward. Um, I think we all agree, we shouldn't have no disagreement, that everyone should have the opportunity to use and enjoy these public spaces, and to feel safe and welcome in the downtown and all over our town. Um, a second thing that's come up, um, I've had residents and business owners talk to me about the level of activity downtown at night, in particular, since reopening. Um, again, I think it's just great that we're all back together, and people are really enjoying being together and having dining and live music options, but we really need a rule set, I think, and the expectation that the rules are gonna be followed, um, so that everybody can enjoy themselves. This gets to noise issues, trash issues, rowdy behavior issues, particularly as the evening gets later on the weekends. Um, you know, I've had, she had people tell me that they left when confronted with an event that they didn't feel was appropriate for their kids to be exposed to. I've had people say they're starting to avoid downtown on the weekends at night. Um, so I just think we all need to share the responsibility to ensure that the public spaces we have here are welcoming and, and people feel included and safe in. So, you know, with that, I'd just like to, um, ask Mr. Roberts, also known as our emergency uh, operations director or city manager, you know, if there's anything you think that we might be able to do administratively, uh, to address some of these issues.
Yes, um, councilmember Banano, um, there are two very separate issues. Um, on the issue dealing with, uh, businesses, uh, in. On the issue dealing with businesses in the downtown, each of our businesses that are using public right of way or have outdoor operations do have a permit with the city that does have restrictions on what they can do in those spaces related to noise and activities after eleven PM. We have been working with restaurants in downtown and we've actually gotten very good compliance from many of the restaurants in the area. It is, of course, I think, time for us to, to, for those restaurants where we continue to have challenges to do, use the enforcement techniques that are included in those permits to gain compliance. So they do have a permit with the city, they did agree to those terms when they use those spaces. We have been working over a period of time and of course, it is our hope that they'll come into compliance willingly. But ultimately, we do have enforcement techniques to, to make sure that that happens. This last weekend, we did have better behavior in downtown and we will continue to have staff monitoring, especially the weekends when it is very busy, we get a lot of visitors from out of town. But of course, the businesses that do occupy those public spaces have a responsibility to monitor that activity within their flex zone areas and we will be working with businesses to do that. So we can certainly do that and report back to the council by memo on our activities there. The second item is, it is appropriate, as you noted, for us to revise and update our special permit procedures to include guidance for our new spaces that we have in downtown to make sure that various activities that are booked into those spaces have both the, the resources necessary and the appropriate distancing from other activities that are scheduled in downtown. So we'll update those procedures. As you know, during COVID, we didn't have outdoor events that were permitted. And as we came back out, there was some confusion about that, but I think going forward, we can be very clear what those rules are and make sure that everybody has a spot to utilize those spaces and we can report back on that as well in a memo form.
Great, thank you. I also want to say, I, I, I think these are just sort of startup issues, getting back into these public spaces, resetting a little bit. And I just think staff has done, you know, really a remarkable job through this pandemic with everything they've accomplished and everything they've done under very difficult circumstances. So in no way do I want that to be misinterpreted as anything. I'm thinking staff hasn't done correctly. I just think, you know, we gotta just, again, pivot back to being together out in the public and, and what you, what you suggested, I think, sounds just right. And I appreciate you getting back to us with a memo sometime in the future. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, it's been a fairly quiet two weeks. The, I, along with, so I, I attended the farmer's market one time, that was during the time that the, that the fire department was there, so I got my little app. It's really nice to be out in public and being able to engage with people in person with the caveats that I think have all been mentioned. The only other thing that I really have to mention is Innovation Tri Valley attended both the housing, infrastructure and transportation meeting in which we, we got some updates on both even housing and value link. But more to the point, we began talking a little bit about the nature of redistricting. And then that topic continued the following day at the leadership meeting where there was a presentation about redistricting at the state level. What all of this shares is the idea that as we have new census data available, which, you know, which, which will be coming fairly soon, we have the opportunity to gather info, not, not only the opportunity, but the, the responsibility to gather information about, you know, from people about how redistricting will take place. How, what kinds of communities do residents feel part of? And to understand the different layers of government, including at the city level. We, of course, just went to districts, so we will be having a redistricting process here. But given that it was two years ago, I, well, more or less two years ago, the changes are likely to be small. Within the county and the state, they're likely to be much larger. So just pay attention to that going forward. That's really all I have for right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I don't have anything to add to the report that I submitted. So the, we're going to go back into closed session now and we'll start that at nine thirty-five. And then after that, we have to come back and adjourn the meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll go into closed session, be there at nine thirty-five. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We're just returning from a closed session. Ask the city attorney, is there anything to report?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the city council did not take any reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, we're now adjourned to a special city council meeting workshop on July nineteenth at twenty twenty-one at five PM, held virtually using Zoom. So good night, everyone.